Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Glen's Falls Common Council meeting. It's Tuesday, June twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-three. We begin our regular session at seven thirty. We'll go to the pledge of allegiance, and I believe that we will have Mr. Landry leading us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, with liberty as its throne.
So next we'll move to the public comments. If anybody would like to come and speak to the council, we ask you to come up to the microphone, tell us your name and address, and that will be done. Will you comment at the beginning of the meeting and then near the end of the meeting as well?
Hello.
Good evening.
I'm Mark Ferrosco, resident of Glen's Falls, owner of businesses in Glen's Falls. And I'm here to talk to you about the H W web project that Queensbury is granting through that is going to do great damage to the neighborhood of Wingham Ridge, Hill, and I think to wetlands in the nearby, reattract the hazard on the Baker Road. And there has not been study done on real impact that this is going to have. They're just, they just kind of re-lagged it, did no assessment of real risk. I hope the city Glen's Falls will stand up for the city, for the residents of the city. This is their so meeting next Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday.
July tenth.
July tenth. The town of Queensbury, this property cannot handle, is not allowed to have misuse. So they need to get changed from commercial to industrial to enable this to happen. And we think that needs to be seriously thought about and to be hatched. That there are state, federal wetlands adjacent to this. The city has already purchased Glen's Falls tennis and swim club, the dinosaur creating park, environmental preserve, and this is so impetuous to that. And personally, we've read that they're going to start at six A M. every morning during the deep, deep, I think it's like fifteen tractor trailer loading box, as trucks back in. It's insane. And I think the city Glen's Falls really needs to step up here and that there is the man that there is serious environmental and other consequence deliberations of this. Thank you.
Thank you. I know Councilman Landry wanted to talk about this under new business. Um, and so, yes.
I'm sorry, sorry. I don't want to start soon. Yeah. Uh, my name's Carolyn Agnes C. and I also live in Silver. Kitchen and bar here in downtown Glen's Falls. I am also on the board of the Glen's Falls Collaborative, chairing Take-A-Bike this year. I believe it is on the agenda that we are asking to open or lift the open container law. I just wanted to give you a little information about that. You know, Take-A-Bike is running every Wednesday from July fifth until August ninth. We are hoping to have vendors who are outside of Glen Street and Bridge Street selling their products in the city park. And we do plan to have volunteers stationed on all of the corners to keep an eye on things and maintain, you know, making sure everybody is following the rules. I think it went quite well during Wing Fest. We're just kind of hoping for the same thing throughout the summer.
Just no rain.
Just no rain. Please. But we will be here for the vote, so if you have any questions, we're available. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else who could join the common council or address the common council? If not, we close the public comment, and we'll go to department head. I've asked Amy Collins and Yvonne to come up and talk to us a little bit, give us an update on the recreation. Rec programs are just kicking off their summer season, and I thought it would be a great time to give us the, give the update.
Well, we're going to bring all of our sporting equipment, but we decided to spare you all. Uh, thank you, and we're going to be talking about recreation today. Um, yesterday we started the kids camp. We have seventy-six to eleven-year-old campers that were very excited to show up yesterday. Of those seventy, we, we, um, we have seventeen scholarship kids that we help. So, uh, just to talk a little bit about the camp and the seasonal staff that we hired, we have eleven camp counselors, um, plus one part-time, ten full-time lifeguards, four part-time, and nine recreation attendants, one field supervisor. Um, we provide necessary orientation, mandatory human resource training. Um, we actually were pretty fortunate with our staffing this year. Um, you know, we, unfortunately, we needed more supervisors to run two camps. We usually try to run one at Eastfield and one at Crandall. Now, the Eastfield camp hasn't run since before the pandemic. So, you know, we're really working to get those two camps up. But this year we could not do that. We rose, you know, we brought the numbers up because we have to stick to that ratio as well, and we have to have those supervisors available at that secondary location. Um, we also, uh, you know, as I said, we went to three job fairs. Yvonne and I are quite a team. We went to Lake George High School, we went to Queensberry High School, we went to Glen's Falls. And we utilized the Warren County workforce development as well. Um, they were very helpful. And even having a communications director, Tim Drobridge was able to advertise many of our positions, and, you know, that was, that was really helpful.
As much as we didn't get all that we wanted.
Right.
We got more than several other communities.
Right, and if you've heard recently, there are neighboring communities that had trouble finding lifeguards. You know, South Glen, Village, South Glen's Falls only had three. So, we feel pretty fortunate.
That's a lot, that's great.
Yeah, and, you know, I just wanted to take a minute to talk about Yvonne because I just, I, you know, we're good for each other. She doesn't, you know, she was a little out of her comfort zone with the, the, um, job fairs, but she did a marvelous job. You know, I help her, and she certainly helps me. But, yeah, so, um, thank you.
We all need all the help we can get.
Yes, absolutely. So, um, we also participate in the Warren County Youth Employment Program, which helps us staff some of our rec attendants. So we have two Warren County youth, um, staff working with us this year. And, you know, that's a wonderful thing because Warren County picks up the, the, their salaries. And, um, so they're, they work along with Miss Mary, who's our field supervisor. Um, so another thing.
Experience right there.
Yeah, yeah, it is. So another, uh, thing that started yesterday were swim lessons. Now, uh, swimming, as far as we're concerned, is a lifestyle. We really want to offer that to as many people as we can, and kids, adult, you know, anybody. We had eighteen sign up for the first session. We have three sessions, so really, we're going to crank out the numbers this year. We have, um, you know, and a lot of our lifeguards, you have to have certain certification to teach as well. So you have to, um, you know, we, we've got nine, but we have them all over. As you know, Heaven's Cove is reopened. Someone called up, wanted to know where Heaven's Cove was. Now that, I kind of like, you know, Heaven's Cove. So we've got the swim area open, and that's, uh, that's awesome. So again, this year we worked with the Warren County Youth Year, and we got some free rentals for big games. You know, they come and have a big chessboard, or have a big slip-and-slide, or a big ping-pong. You know, they, they come and they, they for free, they drop off the games, and the campers get to use it. So, um, we also were able to get some grant funding through them. We got twenty easels. We hired, um, a instructor to do a little art, arts and crafts. And then we have, um, we have pickleball equipment, which you know how I feel about pickleball. So we're going to have pickleball instruction for all the campers. Plus, they'll teach the counselors how to play, and so when the lessons are over, the pickleball will continue for the session, for the camp session. And even Yvonne's thinking about taking pickleball.
Trying to get a court.
Yeah.
Trying to get a court? Put a new court in.
Right, right. So, uh, last year, we also wanted to upgrade some of our equipment and our playbacks. Really needed. Uh, last year we purchased four mommy-and-me swings, um, for special needs kids. So we'll be putting up those. We're, you know, working with the D P W to get those installed. Um, we also have some great new shade, uh, some umbrellas for picnic tables, shade slides. We've got, you know, places where at Havens, at Eastfield, you get out Eastfield, you just, it's, the sun just beats on it. So we have, we've kind of tried to beautify both of those, uh, you know, the swim areas. Um, let's see. Okay, we're, here we get to the online, or the, not the online. We're hoping for online pavilion reservations someday. We want to do that because today.
Amen.
We have seventy-five reservations today.
Wow.
And, you know, this is another kudo to Yvonne. Uh, we really want to automate that, and that'll take a lot of time, you know, and just get that to the place where we want it. Um, you know, other important things, softball league, we're still working on.
Is that coed has started?
Still, yeah, coed and, uh, the men's league. We have disc golf and pickleball clinics coming up. So please, any of you that haven't been out there, I expect to see you all out there, okay? Even, um, yeah.
You know.
We've mentioned, uh, pickleball and disc golf, softball regular golf. Anyone?
Well, yes, we'll be having, uh, Sunnyside, we have some lessons for our campers also, just community, uh, lessons, so we were working with Pat Turley out there at the Sunnyside. Um, we have a Fit in the City at the Band Shell on Mondays, uh, that, which is free, open to the public, um, run by, you know, sponsored by Highmark, our, our provider. We have the Team for Dead Youth Basketball Groups playing in Crandall, six to nine on Mondays. Um, certainly, you've heard about the ARPA funding to our rec areas. We want to continue that. Uh, Eastfield was just lined. Uh, it's open for business, it's great. We look forward to Murray Street, Mount Tom, and Sagamore. And certainly, the Eastfield Stadium's going, undergoing some things with some capital improvements. Um, but, you know, we have, we have some other things going on, but those are really the concentrations. You're going to have a couple of presentations in the next common council meetings, but I just, you know, we're really trying to put our pro, programming back into our department, trying to build up, uh, the department. We're, we're only two, you know, I talk to the town of Queensberry a lot, and, you know, when I say they have nine, or ten, or eleven employees, just, you know, plus, you know, someday, you know, we'll look at all the options, but I think, um, you know, we've really done well with what we have. And I know the mayor's looking at, you know, many ideas about how we can invest and, and maybe, you know, earn money for our, our rec department, you know, and then put it back out there for our kids and even adults, you know, adults learn to swim. We have a lot of, also have to. So if you have any questions, Yvonne would be happy to answer that.
Eighteen eighty-eight.
Thank you.
You should address it to the father.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yvonne told me that. Congratulations to you. I mean, this is, it's wonderful that we have the offering that we have. Need to get that worked out. We need to, you know, what you just said, needs to go to Tim Drobridge, who turns it into a document that tells everybody in the city Glen's Falls through whatever media that they tie into, this is what we have offered. Because, and I said, no, but I know some of them, I'm impressed by what you just said. So I hope we can get that worked out, that this is what you get within the city Glen's Falls.
Yeah.
One of the things I'm really happy with for, uh, for the park, all the parks touch on all of the boards of the city, and there's some things, uh, for, for work for. Mount Tom Park is going to finally have a sidewalk that goes all the way around it. It's going to connect in through Orbital Street so that it won't be, you know, discontinuous. And there's a lot of people that do pickups and drops there, that is school. So I think that's going to be, you know, a safer place. And, you know, just redoing all the courts and all the parks is just, uh, one of the things that we're, we're hoping to do is to make sure not only do we have, uh, this investment in our parks, but also that we have some monitoring going on so that we don't have incidents of vandalism or, you know, destruction of equipment at the various parks. We're working on that in the, in that technology committee, so I just wanted you to know if you were worried about that, that.
Yeah, no, it's definitely a concern as we improve our parks and, uh, you know, I, I also wanted to, um, you know, we've, we've done some great things with public money. Also, that private-public partnership is really important. So, you know, organizations like the Crennel Park Beautification Committee, the Coles, Friends of Coles Woods, you know, hopefully we can, uh, work with the, the Friends of Eastfield to really get that developed. Um, you know, people like Tom and Sally Boy, you know, they've been really generous to our rec department or our rec areas and have donated private money to start certain programs. So, you know, I think people are watching Glen's Falls, you know? They see what we're, you know, with that public money that the mayor has designated to, to investing in our rec areas, you know, that's, that's such a wonderful thing, you know? We've, uh, we'll, we'll parlay that into other things, hopefully. So thank you, Mayor.
And thank both of you, Yvonne, the unsung hero of our department. So I just, uh, I, I want to make sure that we take this moment and thank you for all your work. It was you and I that were here late while you were doing your trainings, and so we finally got the, um, we got to see in the evening. So just, look, thank you, thank you both for your tireless efforts. Um, the programs that we have, uh, we, for a long time, we faced financial cutbacks. The entire department has been cut to ribbons, and still, we have two swimming locations open. We're offering swimming lessons, we're offering softball and, and allowing people to do the, the work we've done at Crandall Park, and now the investment in, in the courts. Next, we need to talk about dog parks, and we need to talk about, um, investing in Havens Cove, the, the connector trail that leads us down to Primes Island, right? It's all pieces of a puzzle, and I just, it wouldn't, um, wouldn't be as successful without you guys and make sure those kids are still helping us today. And that's where the shoe string, and shoe string is overstating the budget that you have. So thank you, all right?
Thank you. Yvonne, don't you want to say something?
No, it's great. Next time, I need to not invite Yvonne because she just talks way too much. So, um, thank you. Um, and then now we'll move to committee reports. Councilman Clark.
Uh, no report.
Councilman Landry.
Um, the Labor Personnel Committee met on the twentieth of June and opened our, um, discussions with the city police union, the upcoming contract. Um, we discussed the rules and negotiations, which is important to have because you never know where you're going to go. Um, and we've, uh, established a schedule for three more meetings in July. Um, the union made a presentation to the city as to what they think a fair contract would look like. The city made a presentation to the union as to what we think that one is, um, is in all negotiations. We're, we're definitely not together yet, but I think that there's a lot of room for discussion. And I think we could all send that we have a fair contract that pleases the union and satisfies the needs of the citizens. So we'll be meeting again, like you say, three times in July.
Thank you. Councilman Lappin, committee reports.
Uh, just to, uh, say that we'll have a technology committee meeting on July fifth at eleven A M. Uh, one of the things we're talking about is an online, uh, reservation system, but AV's left the rooms. Uh, and then, uh, same day, but at seven P M., climate-smart communities, task force will be meeting.
Thank you. And the reason, um, just to clarify that, the reason that we're not, we don't have standalone right now online for those, um, for those pavilions is that we don't want to pay to have one set of online systems and registrations and not all of it. We want to get the whole packet so that it won't get hit time and time again with add-on to under one complete packet. I mean, I knew you knew that, but I wanted to make sure everybody knew it, that it's not that, um, we were slow to act, it's just, don't pay ten thousand dollars to have one part of the system be automated when we all need it to improve, so. And, uh, it's, we're doing great work with our sustainability committee, or, excuse me, our technology committee, and, um, looking at our needs like our parks and the safety and the, um, so it's great work. Thank you, Councilman Lappin. Um, and Councilman Good, um, committee reports.
Uh, Special Projects, we met, um, last week. Uh, and we, uh, continue to work on, uh, um, we have, uh, lots of actions, some very good discussion at our last, uh, Special Projects meeting that really, uh, was enlightening. So we are continuing to, uh, jot away, and I think we're making good progress. Progress, we, we're good progress, but I think we're making good progress. So we'll, we're gonna, uh, first, our next meeting would be the fourth of July. We're not going to meet the fourth of July, of course. So our next meeting will be on the eighteenth.
Thank you. So, um, that is committee reports. Um, there is one item on our voice vote. Is there anybody who'd like to pull that resolution? Not hearing anybody. Um, resolution one is a resolution to approve the minutes of the June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting in Glen's Falls Common Council.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Under roll call vote, are there any items that the council would like to pull for discussion? Not hearing anybody. Um, number two is a resolution to approve the suspension of the city's open container law with the parameter of Ridge, uh, Glen, and Maple Streets between Bay and Ridge during the Glen's Falls Collaborative's Take-A-Bike events held on Wednesdays, July fifth through, uh, July fifth, twelfth, nineteenth, twenty-sixth, and on August second and night, two thousand twenty-three, from five P M. to seven P M. on those days. The collaborative will have volunteers in place to ensure that no alcohol beverages are taken beyond these points. Three is a resolution to increase revenue line, A zero zero nine 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 dash one five eight nine A, miscellaneous public safety income by three thousand one hundred fifty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents, and new increased budget line, A two three one two zero dash eleven hundred, police department overtime by three thousand one hundred fifty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents as a tax. Four is a resolution to approve city Glen's Falls Community Development manual payments in the amount of five thousand two hundred and seven dollars and seven cents. Five is a resolution to award the lowest bidder of C G F dash two three dash zero eight street resurfacing, Topeka Road Corp., Hudson Falls, New York, one two eight three nine, for the bid price of seven hundred and fifty-three thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty-eight cents, based on the streets and estimates provided by the city and in the bid specification. Also, to move ahead with bid alternate, alternate number one, Sherman Town Road, to be paid for by using the street opening permit fees from Ames Goldsmith, um, for a total of twenty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifteen cents. Six is a resolution to approve the mayor's appointment of Mark Toomey, forty-two Ridge Street, to become the chief financial officer of Glen's Falls Urban Renewal Agency. Seven is a resolution to increase the revenue line, A zero zero nine 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 dash four zero eight nine, general fund government aid ARPA by seven hundred and thirteen thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars, an increase in add, an add budget line, A six seven zero two zero dash four four six seven, Recreation Administration Construction for payment on bid C G F dash two three dash zero four for the athletic court reconstruction on Mount Tom Street, Murray Street, Sagamore Street playgrounds as attached. Eight is a resolution to decrease budget line, A eleven, uh, eight one one nine nine zero dash nine thousand contingency other funds by one thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars, an increased budget line, A six seven zero two zero dash twenty-five hundred Recreation Other Equipment by one thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars to purchase an emergency A B D for the, uh, Crandall Park Field House. This will cost, this cost will be reimbursed by Warren County Fund to share the city recreation department. Nine is a resolution to decrease budget line, A one one nine nine zero dash nine thousand contingency other funds by three thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars, an increased budget line, A six seven one four zero dash twenty-five hundred Recreation Main D P W Other Equipment by three thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars to purchase a same-as-existing replacement mo, pump motor for the Eastfield pond. This cost will be reimbursed by Warren County Fund to share the city recreation department. Eleven, or excuse me, ten is a resolution to approve an encroachment permit for Spot Coffee Glen LLC, two hundred and twenty-one Glen Street, Glen's Falls, for advisory opinion from the planning board, uh, following the June sixth advisory opinion from the planning board that the council should look with favor on the application for the placement of tables and chairs in front of the business from June first, two thousand twenty-three through May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, in compliance with Proag regulations for public access on the sidewalk as shown in the approved layout. Eleven is a resolution to approve the mobile food unit license application renewal for Michelle Arnold, D B A, Michelle's Lemonade, sixty-nine Belvedere Avenue, Albany, New York, for one week license to vend Crandall Park for the July fourth celebration on July third, two thousand twenty-three. Twelve is a resolution to approve encroachment permit for Radici Kitchen and Bar, twenty-sixth Ridge Street, Glen's Falls, following a June sixth, two thousand twenty-three advisory opinion from the planning board that the council should look with favor on the application for the placement of tables and chairs in front of the business from June first, two thousand twenty-three through May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, in compliance with Proag regulations for public access on the sidewalk as shown in the approved layout. Thirteen is a resolution to approve the mobile food unit license application for renewal of Tim Shin, D B A, creative caterers, three fourteen Loudon Oaks, Saratoga Springs, to vend at Crandall Park on July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, for the Folklife Center Festival. Fourteen is a resolution to approve an encroachment permit for James A. Capitano, uh, twenty-four Kensington Road, Glen's Falls, New York, to dig an eight-inch-wide by sixteen-inch-deep trench to run P B C pipes leave for a sprinkler system for twenty-four Kensington Road from July first through July fourth, two thousand twenty-three, with safeguards for pedestrian access on the sidewalk per Proag regulations and to replace the sidewalks with full panels, not just the limits of the trench, per the city engineer standard conditions. Fifteen is a resolution to approve an encroachment permit for H H H ten one sixty-one Kerry Road, Queensberry, to place a table on the sidewalk in front of Crandall Library on July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, from nine A M. to three P M. for the annual national HIV testing day in compliance with Proag regulations for pedestrians' access on the sidewalks. Fifteen is a resolution to retroactively approve an encroachment permit as approved by Mayor Collins on June first, two thousand twenty-three, for the Charles R. Wood Theater, two thousand, or two oh seven Glen Street, Glen's Falls, to block off four parking spaces in front of the building, replacement of a lift to complete the, uh, repair work for signage in front of the building from June twenty, two thousand twenty-three, through June twenty-third, twenty-three, with the understanding that the area is being cordoned off to allow pedestrian access on the sidewalk per Proag regulations. Seventeen is a resolution to approve the Warren. Do we have a motion for roll call vote?
So motion.
Please, sir. Set, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman L. Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Murphy?
Yes.
Yes.
And Councilman Good?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, let's see, I, I want to, we'll go to old business, new business. At the end of the, the day, I want to go into executive session, not to pass any resolutions, but to discuss some personnel issues. But before we do that, let's just go to old business. Councilman Clark, old business.
Yeah, I just, I want to applaud, uh, the mayor and the council for approving our resolution number two. number two for open container law, waving that. One of the things that we talked about a long time ago, both the mayor and I, is doing simple things like these to help enhance an event and to draw more people to it, and knock on wood, we've been, it's been very successful the few times we have done it, and I am looking forward to Take-A-Like, it's always a good time.
Yeah, wing fast, please. I ran over to common works and lifted a few frosty ones, and it was really nice, and I'm looking forward to having the opportunities to take a bite.
It just enhances an event, an already great event, so I appreciate that, everyone is accepting of this, so thank you.
Thank you. Old Business, Councilman Lattimer.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing, there appears to be some leftover piles of debris from cleanup in springtime. I know that our pickup time on the twenty-eighth is over with, and I think there are violators who just don't care, and they put it in the street, and I think there's some people who don't pay attention, and they don't realize the twenty-eighth is the end of it, but my concern is, and I have one of mine, is some of those piles now are, are dry and old, and you get a rainstorm and it ends up in our sewers, and we don't get anything else to set this over, so if maybe we could get D P W over a period of time to make a sweep through the city and pick those up, I think it would be beneficial for everyone.
Thank you, I will ask Tom to take a look. If Councilman Lattimer, if you or any of the other councilmen seen a particular pile and just like, you know?
Yeah, I actually had this week a resident, and I looked at the pile, and I believe it's been there since when our pickup was available, but it's also on, in the right way between the sidewalk and the road, so it might be, might have been missed, so I, I agree, there's, you know, you can see a number of these things out there, we could ask D P W to be able to make another sweep, so that would be really helpful.
Absolutely. Thank you. Old Business, Councilman Lattimer.
Uh, yes, I, just out of a resolution to add the A B D equipment, I was wondering if we could just follow up with, I guess, maybe a recommendation about who would be getting certified to use it, because that equipment requires certification.
Yeah, all, all of our rec staff at our camp are the supervisors and the individual councils.
That's great.
Yeah, good question.
Also.
Great light, stink of light.
Also, I just, I don't know if anybody saw, in the New York Times today, there was an article about pedestrian safety, and that this year is the worst year since nineteen eighty-one nationwide for pedestrian mortality. I'd say for Glens Falls this year, we've enacted a complete streets policy and an ADA transition plan, and had a discussion with the mayor and councilor large and other council members about possibly getting our advisory board filled out soon, so that we can address some of these things. And we have Webster Avenue connection project to the Warren County Bike Trail, we have a connection project down Murray Street Hill to, where we're building in more bike infrastructure. We want to, part of the complete streets policy is that when we're doing resurfacing, that we're looking at pedestrian and micromobility access and transit access at the same times, so that we're not just focusing solely on, on motor vehicles and motor vehicle traffic and those concerns. And also, I'd like to applaud Councilman Lattimer Clark for speaking up for different things that we could have for traffic calming measures, and this would be a group that would be able to advocate for this within, within the city government. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lattimer, Old Business.
I don't know.
So to, to take a little bit of the coattails of Councilman Lattimer, I want to, we just got this from our engineer, this is, I'm going to, I want to, I'm not asking for a resolution, I wanted to let you know that, that we had a study done for this intersection of Glen Street and Grant and Sanford, and we, one of the recommendations is, is a long-term, longer-term recommendation to change the lights and to invest in new lights for this, is what the real, the, the best option is to change our light system here, but that's an expensive option. Meanwhile, we had this area, ours on our current, this year's paving notice, so, our engineer asked the company that did Barton Le Judas, who did the study for us, to make recommendations from their, from their recommendations, or to make a quick drawing of what the, how to redo the sidewalks so that they're all ADA accessible, and to add the, repave the, the crossing things that you see here highlighted, and I'm going to send this document, so I, they want permission to go ahead and do this right away, because our work crews that are doing the cement are in the area, so I'm gonna ask them to go ahead and do this, I wanted you to see this, and then I was gonna send this to the Board of Public Safety, yes, sir?
I, when you, when you, I just have a question.
Sure, okay. So I, so the, they're doing sidewalk work in the area, we've asked the company that did the assessment, what sidewalk work would, they not only recommend, but to do a quick diagram so we could give it to our cement company, and then add another crosswalk, which our D P W will do, and meanwhile, there is one thing I wanted to let you know, that this green space that was down Grant Avenue, the, the contractor had, had suggested that we, that right now is all cement, and then we put in some green space there, but Councilwoman Palmer, the, the owner of this corner, it's a, it's a barber shop, and they requested we not do that, that we leave or replace the cement sidewalk, because they think that Councilwoman Palmer's thoughts were as kids gather around this corner, there could be more space for them, but again, it's been a big request for the property owner that we, we just replace this and not follow the green space. And so that's what we were going to do, because both Councilwoman Palmer and the owner had asked us to do that. Other than that, we are still working on the, the long-term solution to this, the best solution is to redo those lights, and I'll be bringing you information as we take action on the rest of the, this study and its suggested plans and actions. And that's what I wanted you to be aware of, that I was gonna send this to the Board of Public Safety and make sure they don't have a meeting until like the middle of July, and I didn't want to hold this up, so Councilwoman Lattimer or anybody else, questions?
One, one of the questions I have is the way that this is laid out as a plumbus shape means there's more time of people crossing in the street, it is more distance, and I remember when we had the crossing guard at one of the public safety meetings, he'd ask that those could be more straightened at those, you know, intersections, so this is kind of what I'm saying.
Yep, no, right, more square.
Yeah.
I, I can ask the company to look, their thinking is that this is the, 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 actually the crossing guard had suggested that we go from the corner from the barber shop over to this part of Sanford, and that is actually goes against both Pro-WAG and the other recommendations, and the company that, that, their expertise in this was this suggestion. Let me, I'll tell you what, I'll right away, reach out to them and ask them if they would consider a more square, and if that would make it safer, and if they, they agree engineeringally wise, because that's their expertise, I mean, that's great, that's a great question, okay?
And maybe one other thing is, I don't see any spot where it's saying how wide the, the sidewalks will be through there? I was just curious what that is, does it say fourth foot?
Where, you see, so.
No, I think that's the green space.
Yeah, that's the green space, it's actually about fifteen feet of sidewalk and not counting, so if they take the green, they're suggesting was to take and add the green space, but we're not doing that, so it's gonna be about fifteen feet.
On it's how wide the, the, yeah, the sidewalk itself is gonna be.
Yeah, yeah.
So we can get that as well.
Sure, I can, I can have, so do me a favor, if I switch with you, get that.
I'm just gonna make a mark.
Sure, you can make the mark, that's great. Any other questions? Just wanted you to know that I was, I was moving forward on it so that this, this cement work could be done more expediently. I will make sure that the Board of Public Safety reviews as well, and I'll share Councilman Lattimer's questions and suggestions with them as well, and get the engineers to weigh in.
Mayor, did they indicate any, what type of expense was for the lighting?
Yeah, well, the problem is that our lights in general in Trump City are really, really, really old, and, and so therefore, it's like we have a, a storage room, literally probably over twenty feet by twenty feet, it's all old guts of old lights, and that's what we do, so that's why this is not being done immediately, because we, there's a company that they've referred us to that does them in the area, and they're very expensive, so we had had a goal, Tom Gerard asked us to approve a budget, which was to replace, say, five lights a year for, for a number of years, the cost of this, we literally make it one light a year, or, but we're, we're gonna start with this one, and we're gonna engage in the company and see and share our long-term goal, maybe we get the prices down, and that is what we were really working on. What you see here is, is our engineer saying, hey, we're doing this sidewalk work on our list, can, let's do this right away, it doesn't solve all the problem, but it addresses it and makes it a nicer thing, and so he asked the company that did the study to draw this out for us, so then he could share it with the cement people, and so I'm sure there's actually better diagrams showing all the width of the sidewalks, but I will get that for you guys, so you have it, okay? That is all I had for Old Business, New Business, Councilman Clark.
I have none.
Great, New Business, Councilman Lattimer.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have some new business that I, one of my notes, like Mark Frost, who was here earlier, who discussed the situation over in Windy Hill, Windy Ridge, East Sanford Street area and proposed development in town Queensberry, there was city boundary line in, in many of the homes out there. The, let me give you a little background information, I think that what's going on out there is more than just, you know, a NIMBY situation, if anyone in my backyard. The development on Quaker Road is being proposed in town Queensberry could have some very catastrophic impacts to, you know, one of the neighborhoods in our community that provides a lot of our taxpayers, so people pay a lot of tax dollars out there, possibly subject some of our infrastructure in the neighborhoods, especially in the Windy Hill area, where we're trying to pump up to the sewer line on Sanford Street, but here's what's happening out there. Located mainly behind the Windy Hill and Rindy Ridge neighborhoods, F W Web, a plumbing wholesale provider here in the area, is interested in purchasing a piece of land at the house of Regional Distribution Center, and the facility is being located in a commercial zone that Queensberry Town Board is interested in rezoning just for the F W Web project. And, and I got into this a little late, so I, I'm gonna try to give you as much information as I can. This is a project that belongs in one of our industrial parks, that's what we have before, so we spent a lot of common tax dollars to make parcels shovel-ready out in the Warren County Industrial Park. We've got our own industrial park up in Veterans, although this may not be a perfect fit, because there's a small retail component to this operation, so it's gonna be a huge regional distribution center, but they're also gonna have a small part of it that will be retail, so the plumbing and heating companies can go there and buy product. If this happens, the residents in these city neighborhoods out in the east end of the city are definitely gonna see their properties de-bad, their water tables are gonna bust, and that's not only a problem for them, I think it's a problem for the city because of our infrastructure down there right now, that's, you know, pretty precariously located underground and, and, and maybe subject to problems due to the rise in water tables. It's also a base into property that, that is owned by the city, the Glens Falls Swim and Tensville, and, you know, that project has got a good group of people who are interested in, in possibly doing a large-scale project out there, or at least a small-scale project with a long-term goal, and this could be affected by, great, the, the water and the, and the land that we own at the Glens Falls Swim and Tensville could be underwater, potentially that we own a piece of property that couldn't be used for any. One of the things that concerned me a lot when I met with the officials from the town of Queensberry, town board members and town supervisor, and the people from F W Web, is that when they discussed the stormwater management for this piece of property, and I asked if they were using dry wells and they were going to let it, let it percolate into the ground, and this is an elevated piece of property that was totally surrounded by wetlands, I was told, no, they weren't putting dry wells in, they're actually gonna put a stormwater management system in, and then pipe that stormwater runoff to a retention pond that would actually be located right behind Elliot Gilgin's house out on the end of Windy Hill, within probably a hundred and fifty feet of her backyard. It probably would raise the water level up behind the Jackson Heights School, so it could have some pretty major impacts if we did that. As far as traffic goes, and, and remember, this thing is about to go to the town board, the Queensberry Planning Board has already passed this, approved this project, and the residents of Windy Hill and Windy Ridge that attended those meetings couldn't believe that when they did, went through the secret process and discussed this, they never discussed traffic implications that there are, or the fact that that's all wetland out there. And the traffic side of it is this, where this property is located, if you were to go over, go on Quaker Road East from Ridge Road, so when you come out of the intersection of Ridge and Quaker and head east, it's two lanes, it goes down to one, I drive that area a lot because I live in that area, and I can tell you right now, it's like a raceway, because it goes from two lanes to one, everybody's trying to see if you can get to the lead position to get into the one, and then when you get into the one, you're right on that curve, and I can't imagine, as this thing moves forward, that the town would ever be able to approve any entrance to that property and allow tractor-trailers to come out of there and turn left on Quaker Road and head towards the northway, because of the danger of doing that. In fact, in the discussion we've been tonight, Garvey Wolf's like, it doesn't even have the tractor-trailers with their cars that they're running in, they park on Quaker Road because they don't want to go back on the property, because they gotta come back out on it, so if they say that, they said, okay, you know, we, we approve this change, and we're gonna rezone this, and we're gonna let them build it, and then F W Web finds that, well, you know what, we're not gonna be able to make that left-hand turn, we're gonna make a right-hand after allowing only a right-hand turn, that's gonna put tractor-trailers potentially on Sanford Street to go down Quaker Road, turn onto Sanford, go out to Ridge, turn onto Ridge, go north on Ridge to get back to Quaker Road. We've already had discussions with this body about tractor-trailers and truck track in the city, and this just invites more. Mark Frost mentioned tonight, there's actually five loading docks, spaces that are gonna be on the backside of this building, very close to where the residents live over there, and then tractor-trailers are gonna come in, and as Mark said, back up, and they're gonna beef and so on and so forth, so the traffic side of this doesn't make a lot of sense. But I really got a feel in discussing this with the supervisor or council people that were at a meeting that we had on this property last week, I really got the feeling that this was a done deal, and the only reason that I'm talking about it tonight is because it was supposed to be discussed at the last town board meeting in town of Queensberry, and they were able to stop that, because all of those residents in Windy Hill in the Town of Queensberry and they were able to stop that because all those residents in the Windy Hill and Windy Ridge area were never sent to notice that this was going before the Town Board. So they delayed it and they're gonna meet again on the 10th of July to discuss, uh, the matter and, you know, I think try to approve. So I'm, I'm very concerned about it. Um, so there's traffic issues, there's environmental issues. Um, it, it's a neighborhood crushing disaster waiting to happen to Windy Hill. And, and I don't think that we can either stand by and allow that to happen. Um, I feel, and, and I apologize for not making, trying to get this on the agenda, um, that it would be beneficial to the city and to the residents of East Sanford Street and Windy Hill, Windy Ridge, for us to pass a resolution, um, with review and assistance from our attorneys so that we position ourselves correctly. So we're just making our voice heard. Um, and I have told the residents of Windy Hill that have gathered together, and there are about twenty-eight of them out there right now, um, that I would be willing to take that resolution and just present it to the Queensberry Town Board at the meeting on the 10th of the night that they're going to try and approve this, along with a petition that the residents had out there. Um, because this is a train wreck waiting to happen in, in an adjoining community that the major impact on them is on the city of Glens Falls. It's not on, it's not on the residents of Town of Queensberry at all about this. So, um, I'd just like to discuss that to see if anybody feels we shouldn't do a resolution. Karen, if you think we shouldn't do a resolution, I'd be interested to hear that. But I think that we need to take, uh, a very strong position because if this happens and moves forward, the future of that boundary line between the Town of Queensberry and the city of Glens Falls in the east end of our community, um, i- is in jeopardy. So, like I say, I, I don't wanna propose, I don't, I don't like it when a resolution comes out like this. We're only doing this because of the time factor of it. We don't meet again as a body before July 10th. Um, and, and I can tell you that I, I hope I've done my due diligence and walked this property and met with the residents out there, um, in its care. So.
So what time is the, on the 10th?
Uh, on the 10th is at seven o'clock at the Queensberry Senior Citizens Assembly, that's for the Town Board's assembly meetings.
Councilman Lander, do you have a resolution for us to consider?
I don't, I, I don't have a resol-, I, I don't have a resolution written. Um, but basically what I would like to do is have...
Before you, before you make the resolution, I just wanna give anybody else, anybody else have any questions? I do wanna tell you, um, my knowledge of it and share what you did. Anybody else have any thoughts?
Just to, I think a resolution would, would cover, uh, safety concerns and environmental concerns, uh, being two things. And then the impact, uh, has the impact to our, uh, wastewater and, uh, our stormwater diversion been looked at? And the impact to, you know, residents for flooding, floodplain differences, has that been, uh?
Looked at?
Yeah, has that been considered? And I, I agree with, with what you said, Mayor.
I totally agree. I think, um, I think this is, this is not a small issue, that this is a big issue. It's something that Glens Falls, we, uh, definitely need to take a lead on. I think that they are, um, gathering their citizens over there. They were not a part of this decision and neither was this council that I know of. And, uh, this is something that we definitely need to, um, take a lead on. So I'm behind you a hundred percent. And I'll be at that.
So, um, we were, uh, we were notified via the Clerk's office, which, um, and, and it appeared from the notice that, that the way that, was it the zoning board sent it to us, Karen? Before that they approved it?
Because the Town Board sent to notice to us that it possibly changed when zoning to land at Glens City.
There you go.
But I don't, I don't, the notice didn't say what the actual project was. The notice says they're looking to change the zoning from one to another. They have to provide us notice that they can seek input from neighboring properties. So I don't think they're meaning to approve the whole project. I think they're meaning to approve the zoning change.
Well, it's kinda, it's unclear and that's why, and so Karen and I, I, I asked Maggie to reach out. Karen sent her the information and Karen, um, was reading the state law. It looked like they were, they were saying, hey, Glens Falls, this affects your neighbors in your city or your community, not ours, right? Like, like there's some magic line and that we should be notifying our residents. Karen disagreed and sent notice to the Town saying, no, no, this is your project. Uh, the way that we read the state statute says that you need to notify anybody within five hundred feet, is it five hundred feet of, of this project? Uh, and then I believe we heard nothing more, uh, from them. And so then they postponed the meeting to July 10th because I think they realized they truly had not met their, their burden of notice, I guess. So, um, I think that, that I agree that, that our community, uh, residents of Glens Falls that are within five hundred feet were not given notice. And therefore, um, I think that it's, it's reasonable. I have it on my calendar. Glad that Councilman Lander does. If anybody else would like to attend, I, I think that would be great. That we say, we don't have real notice. We, we don't know what this plan is. I did see subsequently after this, I have now seen part of the diagrams. It is shocking how close that diagram comes to the backyards of Glens Falls residents. Um, and they clearly haven't had a chance to have input. Now, I, again, Karen's point here, but we're really not sure. But it seems as though, in one aspect, it seems like they've already made the change and they just want the Town, the planning board to approve the change they've already made. And how could they make that without looking at the water table, the true, a true seeker, um, environmental impact? This area is on all the old maps and we happen to know a lot about this area because we were looking at trying to make a water, wildlife, um, area, a recreational, uh, walking area.
And one of the reasons for that was to remediate areas so that there was restoration of wetlands.
Yep.
And that this, you know, for, for these very reasons.
And all of those residents had reached out to us when we purchased the, the, from the Town of Queensberry. We purchased the bankrupt.
Warren County.
Uh, from Warren County. Sorry, we per-, well, we paid the taxes for Warren County, but it's in the Town of Queensberry.
Was it, but you moved by from Warren County?
Tennessee, Flumbe. And, and so I'm not sure.
That's me.
Um, but the point is that, uh, those neighbors that were really upset with us, we thought they'd be happy. But they believed that, oh my God, are you gonna put a bus garage or, um, do anything with this? And when we said no, we actually were accused by a couple residents, and this is before this current council. But just so you're aware, there were residents who didn't believe us. They said, we, we think you're gonna develop this and, and try to pull fast one on us. And we said, no, no, we want to, we wanna get the pond. And we are in current conversations with the Sunea Aranda to, to, uh, try to get control of the, of the pond so that we can have this walking area. We've got easements, verbal easements. We haven't got the signed documents yet. We've gotten Bill Brenner to, to say that he would, would deed us his land so that we could make this an environmental recreation area, recreation in the way of walking area. Uh, so this plan that they didn't tell us about until roughly ten days ago, um, they didn't notify the neighbors. So I, I think we, we stand all in agreement that this is not a good idea or, and mostly, like, I don't even know about the idea. So I think that, you know, if we were gonna do this in the city of Glens Falls, I think we all recognize that notifying all the residents and giving them a chance for public input and, and that they'd be asking, what are the implications with the water? It's not an unreasonable ask, especially since the retention pond, they told you, Councilman Lander, would literally be less than, less than fifty yards from somebody's neighbor. So they're, they're creating a great swamp area possibly, right, in the great swamp, right? In the backyard of some residents. I mean, it's, the fact is you haven't had a chance for them to understand that is, is beyond me. And I, I also have appreciated my relationship so far with the Town of Queensberry and John Stroud. I've really appreciated the last eighteen months. This is un, this is not in congruence with working with a community. And so I, I wish that I'll tell them that at the meeting, that we want to work with them. If they had come to us a few months ago and told us this, I, I was told by Councilman Lander a couple days ago that they had clear-cut this property. And you can't see that from, unless you're on Windy Hill Road or you drive back into the property. As I drive by it, you can see they removed the trees and it goes up a little hill. That's all you can see. So nobody knows what this is. And no wonder nobody from the Town of Queensberry is, is, um, is objecting because it's not near any Town, uh, neighborhoods. They literally call them the neighborhood.
To get back up to arms, to give you some idea. This, they're, they're looking to build a ninety-six thousand square foot warehouse with outside storage. If you're familiar with FWW down on Bullard right now, they store a lot of their product outdoors. And, and this piece of property is as big as, or maybe bigger than these feet. And it, and it's out in that swamp. So it's huge. It's not small. And, and, and the impact could be great.
So as much as I, I worry a little bit about demand, I, I don't think it's our or my purview to demand, um, the, the cease. But I, I think that we need to go and say that we object and, and therefore a resolution. Um, so now Karen, can you help us write a resolution? Then somebody can make, Bob, you can make the motion. So.
Karen, I, I just have a question.
Sure.
I know in some, you know, I'm not familiar with the town process, but in some of our processes, it has to go be reviewed by Warren County Planning and something like this.
Well, they would, they would send the same notice to the Warren County Planning Department to get the county input.
Okay, alright.
And so we received the notice to get the city of Glens Falls input.
Okay, alright, so.
But as far as I know, it was just for the change in zoning, not the actual project.
Not the actual use.
But the sale of the property is continuing and the sale of, or the changes of.
Okay.
Okay.
So FW. Who knows what it is?
Right.
But this is, they're not having a meeting on July 10th to approve the FW site plan review.
Right, right. They're, they're, they're there to approve what the planning board agreed was an okay project and now has to go.
No, no, I don't believe so.
Well, they've already been before the planning.
They may have been there for sketch plan review and many times developers in Queensberry go before the planning board three, four, five times before they get their approval. They have a whole planning department in Queensberry. The notice we received was to change the zoning only, not the specific plan. That's what we need. I need to look into that more than that. Because if you have information that planning board's already made an opinion of site plan review, which I don't know how they could have, you can't give site plan review for an industrial site without the zoning being changed first.
Right, right.
And we have done that, Rose Street, changing zoning on Rose Street for certain projects, which then went before the planning board.
Right.
Okay, so.
So a resolution, you know, they were looking, they sent you the notice looking for input. So the input that I'm hearing is that you want them to not look in favor with the change in zoning specifically tailored for the FWW project based upon lack of notice issued regarding water tables. Hasn't been a full seeker. I haven't seen the seeker. The seeker should be published with the notice. And it sounds like it's where everyone's, wetlands, it may need a full seeker review, not just the short form, but the long form. So I don't know if any of that's even been done for the change in zoning.
I can tell you that for sure, but what I can tell you is the residents did attend and see, I, again, apologize because I'm not sure exactly that, what that whole process is. But they told me that they went to a meeting, and I thought they said it was a planning board, where they did a seeker review and they could not believe, that it just flew up, that there was no questions about the, the wetlands. There was no question about stormwater and, and the effects that it may have on, there was none of that. And that's what I'm upset about because they said, wow, this is a done deal?
Right. Well, I, when you brought it up at the beginning, I was looking at your minutes and I couldn't find this anywhere. So I don't know if they published it.
Right.
But, um, I know that when we received the notice and that we were contacted by, um, Mr. Frost, we made sure that people we knew would be affected did have some type of notice, even though it's not our responsibility to do that.
Right.
Karen, is there something that we can do, uh, either a special session? If you decide that there's something that we would need to do as a council, uh, prior to this, uh?
July 10th is on what?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I, they'd asked us to review it. They did send us that. And we could pass a resolution saying that we, uh, we do not look upon favor of this request to change the zoning, that we have concerns about the environment, about the water table, about the neighbor, the impact on the, the traffic in the neighborhood.
Our, our, our impact on our existing infrastructure.
Infrastructure.
And so there's your resolution, that we do not look upon, uh, in favor of this and we'd like to.
Yeah, the Town said notice taking input from the city of Glens Falls and the county council. Resolution is that you do not look in favor of this project. You don't believe they've taken a hard look at any issues you just addressed. And you're also questioning their seeker review process.
Yeah.
And then, Ross? Do we have a motion to pass it out as a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye. Do we need, we need a roll call vote?
Roll, roll call vote must be announced. Uh, do we have a motion for a roll call vote?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call vote, please.
Councilor Hart, sir?
Yes.
Councilman Lander?
Yes.
Councilor Rappel?
Yes.
And Councilman Wood?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all.
So the motion of resolution from the floor passes.
Yes. Thank you. Um, do we have any other new business, Councilman Lattin?
No new business.
Councilwoman Goodwood? Great. Um, I, I just have a few moments that I'd like to ask you to come down and, um, under executive session, just talk about personnel. Um, and I have no motions to pass, no resolutions to, to ask you to do. So, um, Councilman Clark and Councilman Lander, can I ask you both to make a motion, a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And then can I ask you to make a motion while we're coming up?
Second.
You?
A motion to adjourn.
And a motion to adjourn.
A motion, second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.